Okay, good evening, and I'll call to order the January 21st Reglative Meeting of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners. Our first order of business will be our pledge of allegiance, and after that, I want to have our Sheriff come forward for the invocation. And I do want to say that Commissioner Rogers and our County Manager Bryant Morehead are not here tonight. They're in Raleigh on business, on county business, and they couldn't attend, so hopefully they'll come back with good news. So if everyone would please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic forth which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, please have a seat. I'd like to read a quote for you that says this: "There can be no gainsaying of a fact that modern life is characterized by endless tensions. On all levels of life, men are experiencing disruption and conflict, self-destruction, and meaninglessness. And if we turn our eyes around our nation, we discover that the psychopathic wards of our hospitals are filled today. Fear and anxiety have risen to the throne of modern life, and very few persons escape the influence of the powerful domination. It is probably true to say that we live today in one of the most, if not the most frustrated generations of all human history." This is a quote from the opening of a sermon by Dr. Martin Luther King at Dexter Avenue Baptist Church, September of 1956. I will lead you to draw your own conclusions about the similarities to that which we experience today in modern society. But more importantly, he goes on to say throughout his sermon, he goes into details, and I will spare you those and encourage you to look at this particular sermon because it's very instructive for living life in a tense world, a contentious world. He goes on to say, "But then in the midst of all that, a voice rings out through all the generations, saying, 'Come unto me, all ye that labor and are heavy laden, and I'll give you rest.'" He is, of course, quoting Jesus in Matthew 11, verse 28. What a world we would live in if we could experience rest, peace, the other things that Christ taught about loving your neighbor and loving God first. My prayer for us as a county, for us as elected leaders, and for the citizens that involve themselves in daily life, whether it be work or recreation, seek to know and understand their neighbor, to share peace and love and kindness regardless of policy disagreements, even as Martin Luther King prayed for that in his time, a man that was later pursued by Herbert Hoover's FBI and called communists and a number of other things. He pressed on to achieve Civil Rights Act of 1968, which, as we know today, brought opportunity to all Americans, or at least intended to. Let it be true for us that we continue to pursue those goals, and let us remember those who have gone before us, who have given their life in pursuit of those goals." I would invite you to join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for the opportunity to gather as those chosen by the citizens among us to represent them in ensuring that justice is met, public policy is transparently and openly debated, and that the conclusions we reach are not those that serve ourselves, but those whom have selected us to serve in these positions. In the name of Jesus Christ that I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, our next order of business is public hearing, but we do not have one tonight, and a public comment session is after that, and no one signed up to speak, I believe. Amy, correct? Okay, so we'll move on to constituent concerns. Does anyone have any constituent concerns that they'd like to voice?
I had a call the other day from, HBO had to discontinue their paying for their employees to ride the Haywood Public Transit and stuff because they got to where they couldn't afford it anymore. And I had some grandparents call me concerned that if we had any other program of any kind that would, that would help or anything to, and I talked to Patsy at Mountain Projects, and she said that it would not only hurt HBO, but it would hurt them too because they might have to lay a couple people off the transit buses and stuff. And she was wondering if there's any other programs or grants or anything that we could implement to sort of help their people out because there's some of them, there's as many as 20 of them that ride the Haywood Public Transit, and they might have to quit their work because they can't afford, their supplement's just $5 now, and it was something like $30 before, I think. And they're concerned it's going to hurt, Patsy says it's going to hurt them, the employees, it's going to hurt the people that work at HBO because they can't afford to come to work, and they're going to have to quit, and they were just concerned if there's any other alternatives to what's going on there to sort of help because Haywood, to me, I think HBO does a pretty good thing by hiring these people and trying to help them out, but if they have to pay $30 each time, it wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't be feasible for them to work because they couldn't, it'd be breaking even. And I didn't know exactly what I ought to tell them, if there was any other grants or programs or anything that we could check on.
I think they only pay $3 a trip. I mean, I don't think it's 30.
They were paying 30, that's what they said.
If I might add there, Commissioner Ramey, I actually got a couple of calls on the same thing, and the last I heard, I was trying to work with a fellow that was trying to help his sister get to and from work, and it was $3 is what he told me that they had worked out. Now, I, he was, it was a work in progress, but he was affected by this cutback as well as his sister, and so I won't, really don't want to go on record, but he did say that he was working toward that, and it sounded like he could do it for $3 a trip. Somehow or another, they're going to work something out.
That's what they're, according to what they were telling me, they're giving them $3 a day now where they were paying for the whole trip, you know, and that's a supplement.
Yeah, I don't know anything other than that, but...
Something about they cut it back to two days a week.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know if we have any purview on that, Mr. Chairman, about the Haywood Public Transit. I know we do pass through funds to mountain projects. I just, I'm like Commissioner Ramey, I didn't really have time to talk to Bryant about it, and this gentleman was trying to work through that on his own, so...
Something like 20 of them, I think, that rode that public transit, and they were going to have to maybe quit because they couldn't afford it.
Yeah, I did get, I did get a call, two calls on that, too. Sure did, so...
Yeah, I'd hear what we can do is, Chris, can you just have, maybe we'll get Patsy here next meeting on the February, first meeting in February, and we'll find out what, exactly what the details are and what the dollar amounts are, because it seems like it's a little bit different than what I understood it to be, but, okay. Does anybody have anything else on that?
Actually, Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, I've got several calls with DOT issues, and it's basically surrounding the flood. Some people's got, stopped up culverts, and I'd worked with Bryant prior to this. He'd notified DOT about a certain one, and they did get on it. Funny thing, I don't know how many of you in the county have seen these mowing rigs going on right now, and it's sub-freezing temperatures, but I got a couple of calls this week, and the guy even sent me a picture, but he wanted to know, "Are you doing this?" And I called our state representative, and apparently it is a state contractor. They're mowing back the woody debris and some, you've seen the big bushhogs where they trim back the, but they are actually still mowing some grass, if you can believe it. And some of the folks was like, "Are you kidding me? They're really, really late, or they're getting a really early start on mowing season?" I mean, here it is, January. And so I thought that was kind of some funny phone calls, but I did contact our state representative, and apparently it's some kind of a contract, contract work the State Department of Transportation's doing on some of our secondary roads in Haywood County. So if you see some mowing going on in January, the folks doing the mowing are not touched in the head, they're not needing any psychiatric help, it's a planned event, so I thought that was, I got two calls on that, so...
I hadn't seen that. Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Okay, next order of business, Administrative Agency Reports and Presentations. And so Hurricane Helene Recovery Updates, and Assistant County Manager for Recovery and Resiliency, Garen Bradish, is here tonight. Do we also have somebody from Disaster Recovery? Okay, I'll get you here just next, okay?
Good evening, Commissioners. A couple of quick updates. I want to give a reminder to what we discussed at the last Commissioners' Meeting about the 90-day extension on those who receive substantial damage letters and live in the jurisdiction of Haywood County, the town of Clyde, the town of Canton. You now have the 270 days from the date of your letter to make a decision on repairing or rebuilding, and if it would require elevation under the ordinances. So just remind people of that. We are working to place, with the state, to place temporary housing on properties where citizens are working to actively rebuild their homes. So I would ask anyone who wants state housing, that'd be a travel trailer, on their property where their home is as they rebuild, to contact Development Services Office, and we will put you in touch with the state office to see if you qualify for state housing at the location of your home to be repaired. We had, the first week this program was rolled out under Governor Stein, we had seven in the county who applied, and six of those are now getting these homes. So it is moving, and I have had contact with the, on Friday, the contractor who is doing this work for the state.
What is the contractor doing, moving them in?
They're moving, they're a haul company that are hauling the campers to the sites and placing them.
Okay, do they hook them up for folks, or?
They do. They pick them up, and then they'll connect to the water and sewer, and whatever needs to be done with that.
Well, that's great, okay.
And they're new units?
They are new units, yes. The state ordered, I think, a thousand of these units to be placed through western North This weekend, FEMA began contacting Helene survivors staying in hotel rooms that are paid by FEMA to ensure their continued need for the temporary sheltering program. The program is not ending in western North Carolina, and they will work with those who qualify to find more permanent housing solutions. FEMA representatives will be calling those who are no longer eligible for continued stay in the hotels. That has now been extended, so if you are ineligible, you're in a hotel and you're ineligible, you will now be contacted by FEMA, and originally you had seven days to find other accommodations. Now that has been extended to three weeks. So those people who are not eligible to be in the hotel rooms and have to leave will now have three weeks once they're contacted by FEMA. The FEMA deadline for applying for individual assistance or requests for public assistance will be February 6th, so that's an important date for anyone who applies for the individual assistance or public assistance. For citizens who wish to enter the Helene mitigation program, please contact Cody Grassi at 828-476-0285, or you can email at mitigation@haywoodcountync.gov. Currently, we have 35 applicants in for mitigation and about 40 more who are interested. I would encourage anyone that is interested to try to make the application, get in the program. You can withdraw from the program, but we would like to get our list of people who want to be in it and submit it to the state first. Get to the, get to it before all the others do, so...
And if I'm correct, Travis Donaldson told us at the last meeting that you enter the program, and even on the last day, that you have to sign the paper down the road, and you can withdraw.
That is correct.
Is no strings attached to go ahead and get in it? So just wanted to reiterate that.
That is correct. Along those lines, tomorrow will be the kickoff meeting for mitigation with Tropical Storm Fred. So they'll be meeting with the contractor. It is invite-only for those people who put in for the mitigation program under Fred. So they will be meeting privately with the contractor tomorrow, and then there will be further meetings setting up later on in the week with each individual homeowner with that contractor to start valuing the home and do those things to kick off that mitigation.
Do you know how many will be in that program?
I would say it was around 30, something like that. But like I say, any of those people could drop out before this week, too. So you have up until that time to drop out, and some have, some have dropped out over the time, yes.
Garen?
There's, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
There's no risk involved. I mean, somebody's not obligating herself or whoever. It's just, like you say, they drop out right at the last minute, so...
Yes, it's just another option that is available.
Yeah.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to, so we fell around words that a lot of people don't understand, probably. So if you own a piece of property, and you don't want to go back there and you want the government to buy it, that's, this program is what this is talking about.
Correct.
So in Fred, they've already applied, and that list is set, I guess, so you can't get in that one now, probably.
Yes, no, there is a deadline to get the applications in, and that has passed for Fred.
For Fred, okay. But for Helene, if you get you out, when's the deadline for it?
We've not set one in stone yet, but we're working on one.
So they need to contact Cody Grassi at the number you specified, and if they want to sell their home and move somewhere else, or just, yeah, they'll, I guess they'll buy their home, and usually, well, the way that works is once the state buys it, then they turn it over to the county, or, yeah, that's the way the statute reads, I guess, so, or the law, but...
FEMA just buys the home, so you wouldn't want to tear down the home or anything like that. They do not buy the property, so the home has to still be there, whatever condition it was in.
Okay.
Because they just buy the home, so we would always encourage people, if you're thinking about doing this, but you're worried about something happening with the home, the home collapsing at some point, it's best to call us first before you do any of those decisions because they are buying that home as it stands.
Have they not bought the real estate?
They do not buy the real estate.
Well, that's new, then.
So...
Okay.
So does the owner retain the real estate?
No, in cases, in previous cases, like in 2004, the county took the real estate.
Okay.
For Helene, it may be the towns, it could be Clyde taking the real estate, so...
So, okay, so that's how it's going to work with this program?
But we're not making a land grab up here. That's something, they voluntarily go into that program, that's something FEMA did. We're not taking their land.
No, not at all.
FEMA's given us the deed to it. So there's some misinformation floating around in the county. I don't want to be accused of taking anybody's land. I'm not going to do that. None of us up here are going to do that. So they're just, they're just giving us the deed to it. I see, I see our attorney raising his hand. Frank?
Under the FEMA regulations, they acquire the property, okay? They pay the owner for the building on a negotiated basis, but the land can't be used for anything vertical after that.
Right.
So FEMA gives it to the nearest local government that's dumb enough to take it because it's taken out of the tax rolls, but you can't put anything vertical on it, anything that would cause flood or anything like that. So you end up, just as we've ended up after, and the town of Clyde ended up, after the earlier floods, we end up with these lots beside the river that look great, except you can't put anything on them.
And that's part of the contract information.
Exactly, that's the deal.
That the landowner signs, voluntarily enters this program, it's in the contract, they voluntarily do that and sign their name to it. We're not involved with any of that.
We end up, we end up leasing these vacant lots for a buck a year to people who will garden on them.
Yeah.
Because that's one of the few things that you can do with these vacant sites, is you can have gardens on them. And so you, some of the nicest garden spots down in Clyde are owned by, you know, Haywood County.
Yeah.
And there's no altern, I mean, there's really no alternative to what could be done. They just look for someplace to park the land.
Yeah, now, I'm a little bit confused because you guys say FEMA buys the building, but who buys the land?
Well, FEMA acquires the whole thing, but they're, but what they're paying for...
Is the house.
What they're paying for is the house, the vertical structure, okay, at a negotiated price. This is, nobody's compelled to sell. They can sell or not sell, do whatever they want to with it, but, but the price they come to is a deal with FEMA. FEMA has appraisals done, they negotiate it just like any other deal.
Let's be clear, you know, I'm a big property rights guy.
Okay.
And that is entirely up to the landowner.
Completely voluntary.
They know that going in, they sign the contract, it's up to them.
Nobody, nobody...
That's right.
...puts them under any compulsion to sell the property. They can continue to own the property till doomsday, but if they want FEMA to buy it, they've got to take it on FEMA's terms, that is, that it, that when they're done with it, they've sold it to FEMA. FEMA takes it with the understanding that they're going to offload it to the nearest local government that'll take it as a, as a flat site with a perpetual prohibition of anything vertical going on it. And so eventually, you end up with, with these highly floodable areas end up being essentially a kind of a little checkerboard park space or garden space or...
And that's what we had, I think you'd see state here, wasn't it?
Oh, yeah.
A few months back, talking about what we could do with this property. They were trying to turn it into recreational opportunities and make it a positive.
Oh, it's absolutely a positive.
They're working on a plan now.
For the recreational guys, see, you could put these little, these little parking areas and then a ramp into the, into the waterway so that you can have canoeing or boating, you know, on and off the, at that site, and that's, that's something that's, I mean, that's extremely attractive for the plate, for all of these waterways in Haywood County because the, the waterways are so...
Well, with, with the mill gone now, you don't have to worry about, I mean, you've got trout, I mean, you've got fishing now.
Absolutely.
Kind of fishing there.
Absolutely, and so the desire for these put-ins and take-outs all along the river, it's kind of, you'll start to see this develop. It requires some expenditure by the, by local government, usually through grants, that we get grants from state agencies usually or nonprofits that'll subsidize, you know, it'll cost you $50,000 bucks or something to, to build a ramp and to, and to grade out the parking and all that stuff so that you make an attractive place that people can get in and out of the river.
So I think we got maybe off in the weeds just a little bit about what we were doing, but, so just to be really clear, because communication sometimes gets confusing, a property owner has the ability to make their own decisions on this, and mitigation or a buyout is, is their decision to make. They can raise the property, they could repair it at their expense or with the help of their insurance or nonprofits, but nobody's forcing them to sell out, is what you're saying.
That's correct.
That's correct. And then, once they sign up for the program, they can go all the way through it till the day it comes down to actually signing it over, and even then, they can change their mind and go back to any of the other options. That's just what we're trying to say.
That's correct. And I, I think that we will see a large turnout of people, especially along, with homes along Clyde, that will probably enter the mitigation program, because those people have been flooded in 2004.
Yes.
They were flooded, I mean, four times now, and the majority of the people I've talked to said, "I don't want to rebuild it again." So I can understand that, but the process can take some time with mitigation, and they could change their mind two years from now, a year from now, who knows, and pull out of it. We'll see how long the process takes for mitigation.
That's something else that I want people to be mindful of, and that's one of the things I was quarreling about last time, is that these Tropical Storm Fred mitigation programs are four years old, and we're just now getting to it. So it takes a little bit of time, but if you've been flooded four times in 20 years, you know, I could see where that might look good to having to rebuild again, so.
Yes.
The wheels of progress turn slow. I said that two weeks ago.
Yeah, and let me say also, if, if it's property that you, if it's family property or it's something that means a lot to you, you can build back there, and those houses will stay because we had houses that were built back after Fred that were flooded in this flood, and those houses, the owners were out for a few, well, probably for a few days or a few weeks, and then they were right back in their house with minimal damage, really. And, and I've, I've seen that, I can show you three houses where that's happened. And so don't, don't think you have to take the buyout if you'd rather elevate your home that's there, fix it and elevate it, or if you want to, want Baptist, you know, Baptist on mission, they were in my office today, actually, and they're, they're working on houses right now every day.
That's right.
And it's a great program, and they have really helped our community, I want to give a shout out to them, but they, but you can do that, so don't think you have to sell out if you want to keep that family property maybe, or if it's something that you just, is special to you.
Absolutely, and that, like I say, it gets back to the first thing I said with our extension of the substantial damage letters. People are having to make a decision, which way do I want to go? They've filed their insurance claim if they had flood insurance, and many times, not heard back from that yet, there's so many claims that have to be processed. So it's difficult. Do I mitigate, tear down, or do I rebuild? If I rebuild, do I need to elevate? Do I need to put flood vents in my foundation? So there's a lot there that has to be decided, and unfortunately, it's not just FEMA, insurance companies are taking, it's just a lot to process right now. So we're trying to give people time, and we try to inform them of their decisions and give them all their options through this, so...
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I just wanted to really explain, because I know it's going to be an important decision for people.
Yes.
You know, moving forward, so, go ahead.
One last thing, Development Services staff has been working with Appalachian Landslide Consultants to basically go out and hack these landslides, evaluate them as a result of Helene, and we are compiling this data to give to the state as part of the mitigation program. Now, we don't know what the landslide mitigation looks like or how that'll work right now, but we are at least collecting the data of all these landslides. So I would say to any citizens, if you have a landslide on your property and you think we've not been to it to evaluate it, call Development Services. Tim Sisk, or Tim, sorry, is handling that through Rose Control, and he's working with Appalachian Landslide Consultants on a daily basis to walk these landslides and map them for our data, so...
I cannot stress enough how important, it's sad to say, I am excited to see that program, but that is something that has no insurance policy anywhere will cover you, you have the best homeowner's policy that is available, and there is a sheet in your, in your deck page that says you have no coverage for landslides, and that is so impactful to people in, in our region. I mean, you don't see landslides at the coast, it's related to slope, and that is so important to see that they are paying attention to that, and I feel like we've, I hate to say celebrate, but it's a good thing that we're getting that information to them and kind of leading the charge. That's going to be very helpful to people this time and in the future. That's critical. So I hate to say congratulate you or commend you on that, but that's just so important, especially where we live.
Well, that's all the updates I have unless you have any other questions.
You know, Garen, that's valuable information to be put out there. I see a representative from the Waynesville Mountaineer here, and got some very good information that can dispel some of these, the public fear, because you can see the 270-day extension, the February 6th extension, got a number to call for this mitigation program that we've extensively discussed, and maybe you get Dylan, our PIO, to put some of this real information out for, for folks to see, and I think, I think that'd be very appropriate. I think you can see that a lot of agencies, and I appreciate you, you know, communicating this in this meeting so everybody can hear the things that are going on. It's changing, and the situation where the state bought 1,000 campers, you know, I can comment on that, and I will say that FEMA dragged their feet around on that, and thankfully the state stepped in and said, "Look, we've got to do something. We need to do something, do something now." And so that is an added thing that's came along just in recent weeks, and that's helped people. Do you know if these folks that are contracted to move these trailers, would they get a private trailer that's been donated, or does it strictly have to go with the state-bought campers on this program?
It, it is with the state-bought campers on this program. All of them look the same, they're the same color, they're like a uniform, standard unit.
Okay.
One of the criteria, as they move forward, they started, the first criteria which we're looking at right now is placing them on properties where people are rebuilding their home.
Right.
So they're not going into mitigation, they've got the permits to re... They're not going into mitigation, they've got the permits to rebuild. So that was their first step.
Right.
Is get those people, because oftentimes, and I could definitely understand this, you want to stay next to your home when you rebuild it. You want to be there to be able to protect your home, watch what's going on and work on it. So that was their first, that's what this first round of these campers, what they're geared toward. We'll find out how that changes over time.
Great.
It's good they can do that. A lot of people have animals and they, they can't take them somewhere else and they can stay on their property, which is what they're used to doing. And they can stay on their property and, you know, continue to improve it, you know, and get it back where it was. So it's a great program.
Great information, Garen, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, then we have Southern Disaster Recovery Representative Roger Dale and their Soil and Water Director, Dwayne Van Hook here tonight. So appreciate y'all being here tonight.
Evening. How are y'all this evening?
Fine, I hope you are.
Good. Just want to give a quick update and I'll talk about the emergency watershed protection program.
Say your name, say your name.
I'm sorry. It's Dwayne. Dwayne Vanek, District Director, Haywood Soil and Water Conservation District.
We know who, which one you are. I mean, we know who you are, but you know.
Sorry about that. So, and then Roger Dale is going to speak a little bit about some of the FEMA operation as well. We were fortunate enough after Helene to be allowed by U.S. Department of Agriculture to continue work on Fred. There were, of course, a few strings attached to that. There were, there is no more money available from Fred disaster. So to work on a project, basically we had to be able to do it at the same cost post Helene as it would have cost, uh, prior to Helene. And so after doing a few quick assessments, we determined that there were two stream reaches where the volume of debris was very similar post-Helene to prior to Helene. And we were able to start back to work. We are currently working, as of last week, removing debris from two river stretches. Both of those are in Crusoe, uh, under the EWP program. And so, uh, that, that is good news because, because that stuff needs to get out, obviously. And, and while I'm talking about that, I do want to take a, a moment to thank both the contractors that were working prior to Helene. That would be Rex Griffith Construction and Zulu Marine. Both of them were able to get a lot of debris out prior to Helene. I know for a fact that Rex's had, had at least three or four different, uh, groups working very diligently. They were able to remove a tremendous volume of debris within days of Helene impacting Haywood County. And, and I'm sure that that had at least a small positive impact in reducing some of the, the damage that did occur during Helene.
Well, I can tell you, Dwayne, that when we were in the helicopter looking on East Fork, you, you saw very little, uh, big trees in the, in the, in the waterways. And it's because they had removed those. And I guess the, the ones that were probably got washed away that were maybe, you know, iffy in, in Fred, they got washed down and we got them out of the river. And then the new ones that were there were probably just something else, you know, because the water was maybe a little different in areas. But I noticed that for sure, that the, that the debris wasn't in that area like it was in other areas.
That.
So you're exactly right about that. And I appreciate Rex and his, Rex is one of those guys, he gets in here and gets it done. So he was getting it done, so. But anyway, I just wanted to add that.
Yeah, thank you. It was very important to them, you know, and, and they did really good work.
They really did.
To open that area up. They knew that it would be important. So did want to take a moment to commend them. As far as Helene, we, we are currently working towards doing assessments for Helene, for emergency watershed protection. It'll, it'll go very similar to Fred. You know, we'll break up the county and assess everything for debris as well as stream bank damage and, and come up with cost estimates. We, we've already entered into an agreement with, within RCS to, to, to work on EWP. And we'll be bringing in folks from around the state to help us with those assessments. Of course, the difference this time is there are multiple counties affected and it's very widespread. And we're all going to be doing the same type of work. So I think the timeline is going to be a little longer as far as getting a lot of that work done.
But at least by being a bigger area, I think it raised more attention than, than Fred did. It seems like Fred was just kind of a, you know, just a little thing, but this is a, a really big.
It's a really big.
Big, big issue, so.
One, uh, another point I will make, EWP will, will be paying 100% for this disaster as opposed to a 75-25, which was the cost share percentage that we had for Fred.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah. The state stepped up and picked up the 25% match for us after Fred, but at this time the, the, the program itself is going to be paying 100%.
I think Governor Cooper got Biden to agree to that.
Yes, Biden agreed to that. And, and, you know, that, that's a very good thing. A lot of the other details, I'm, I'm not going to go into a whole lot, I'll answer any questions, but it, it's a very ongoing, very evolving process as to what may or may not be eligible and how much funding is going to be there. We, we really don't know at this time, but a, as with Fred, I think it's important to just, we, we assess everything and, and come up with a cost estimate on that and, and then we'll, we'll find the money where we have to.
And then, Dwayne, did you have anything to do with, uh, when, was it the Forest, North Carolina Forest Service building bridges to, in certain areas or was?
No, that was not through the Soil and Water.
It was not? Okay.
No.
Okay.
No.
I was just curious, you know, they were building foot bridges to, to access homes and I know some of those got washed out when we had that little, well, it wasn't a flood, but it was a heavy rain, you know, several weeks ago, so.
It's unfortunate. I had heard that too.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions for me?
No, appreciate all your work. It's, you've definitely been a busy guy.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Roger Dale. I'm Project Manager for SDR, Southern Disaster Recovery. Uh, just to update you here in Haywood County, we are 93 days into the contract. That's how many days we're in. And as of today, we've moved 35,043 cubic yards of what we call C and D construction debris as well as vegetative debris. And we've also hauled out of our two T DMS sites, 11,521 cubic yards to our, what we call our final destination site. And I'll give you a quick rundown by jurisdiction, um, just real quick. Haywood County, the rural areas of the county itself, you know, there's places we've been four, five, six times and then there's, you know, maybe a couple of places we've only been one time. We've got people who have been riding the county the last two or three days who are actually mapping debris piles that we, that we see. One of the things we've kind of run into is we'll go cleaning area and then as fast as we can get it clean, dumping is being done again. Not saying it's not storm related, but, you know, we are starting to see garbage bags and stuff like that, so.
I don't understand that. We've got convenience.
Yeah.
You know, people are just.
Yeah, we, you know, that's something that happens in every disaster.
It doesn't.
This is nothing new. So, so in Haywood, you know, we'll be talking to the, uh, to, uh, the county manager, Assistant County Manager about when do we see, you know, what, how many, how many, how many more passes would you like us to do? And of course, you know, we want to make sure we do our due diligence that we, we get everything that we can see and we know about. So that's why we're, it's kind of a tag team effort between us and county administration right now, trying to figure those things out.
So do we need, if we see debris needs to be picked up, do we need to be alerting you of where it is?
If you, I think there's a process in place.
Okay.
Yeah, and then that process, they get it to us and we get it to our contractors, our subcontractors. Yeah, absolutely, please.
I, I travel west fork and quite a bit in, in Little East Fork and I, there are some new debris piles there that are kind of new.
Yep.
I know one house, I know the fellow was in the hospital when the flood happened and now it looks like they've gotten, there was a new pile there that wasn't there, you know, before. And so, uh, okay. So I, I didn't know if you guys, I didn't know how that worked.
Yeah, I've, I've actually called Brian a couple of times because some citizens call me and you've got a list. Brian said he'd put, put it on your list for pickup and, and so it's, it's work, it's working.
Okay. How, how do you feel, I don't know if I'm interrupting your presentation, but how do you feel about your progress as far, so you've made one sweep, you think, or two or?
In the county?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, sir. We've made, we've made one for sure.
Right.
In some cases we've made five.
Okay.
And in other cases we've only made maybe, you know, besides that one, maybe we're on the second pass. But we've got maps for that that show us how many passes we've been.
Okay.
Typically, typically we want to try to do at least three. That's, that's kind of the rule of thumb, so to speak.
Right, right.
Having said three, we know there's places we're doing a lot more than that and we know there's places that will not require that much, but on average, that's about where we're at. The thing that we don't want to get into and we want to make sure you as our client, so to speak, doesn't get into is, you know, we, we certainly don't want to get into any type of what we call de-obligation from FEMA to where they'd come up and say, no, that debris is not eligible because it's not storm related. So that's why we, we pay particular attention is it storm related, is it not storm related? Because we certainly don't want to get into that. We're not, I don't think we're there yet, but we are starting to see some signs in certain areas where we could be getting close that the debris's coming out as maybe not quite, it's questionable, I should say.
Okay.
That makes sense?
Yeah, it does because, and I know what you're saying. When we see questionable debris like that, how's, how's it going to be picked up?
We, we pick it up. We pick it up and it's, it's logged just like it normally would. I mean, so we're not leaving it, we're getting it. What we would do is as we, if we, as we see more and more come in, that's when we'll be in direct conversation with the Assistant County Manager and the County Manager about, okay, this is what we're seeing so less.
Right. Because, yeah, because you guys have the equipment to pick it up when they're doing that, when people are doing that, even though they shouldn't be. But, you know, we don't have the equipment to do that with and it's going to be an eyesore.
Absolutely, absolutely. That, that's why, whenever we get to that state where we call final pass.
Right.
You know, that's, that's when the county or the city puts out and says, okay, all residents, please have everything out to the curb or by this date. Okay?
Well, I'll tell you something, what we can do as a county is when we have debris that we pretty much know isn't, we can go through that trash and find addresses and, and, and send you fines. I, I think, you know, we do that occasionally whenever we have convenience centers closed and people dump a bunch of trash there. You know, our solid waste people will go through it and we'll, you know, we'll find out who we need to find. So if, I, I just want people to know that in the public because they're, they're creating an eyesore if they're putting debris, if they're putting items out.
Trash.
Yeah, trash out there because they're too lazy to drive three more miles down to the Bethel Convenience Center.
Well, when we get to a pile and we have trash bags in it piled, then what we have to do is cut them open.
Yeah.
Because the, the TDMS site is not permitted.
Correct.
For MSW, which is household waste. So if it's got trash, household garbage in it, I kind of, we, we have to set it off to the side, we just can't get it.
Right, right.
Now, if somebody bags up, whether they tore out their drywall or insulation or something like that, now, yes, we get it all day long.
Yeah, or they go down the, down the riverbank picking up trash, putting it in a bag or stuff like that, yeah. I could see that.
That's right.
And you guys can tell.
Yes, sir.
But I just, you know, people, I, I just wish they wouldn't take advantage of what we're trying to do, you know? I, I wish they would, of course they will, but I just, you know, I just want to, I don't want to be mean spirited about this, but just don't put trash out there because, you know, we can find you for it and we have in the past. So just remember that, you know?
Well, we also have some cleaning up of areas that we've got to do. So what we're hoping, we're getting there with and clean that up like it should be.
Right.
We, we rode off and left stuff and the reason we did is for time constraints, trying to get the bulk of it out, um, thinking, you know, more is going to come out. So there's no need to get down to any degree until the final pass. So what we're doing now is we're trying to clean everything up as good as we can and maybe that sends the message.
Yeah.
That, you know, we shouldn't be, let's don't put anything else here if that make, you know, do it that way.
That makes sense. And, and, you know, also this is a good time of year for you guys to be doing that because as the vegetation starts growing in the spring, it's going to start hiding this stuff.
That's right.
And that, you know, we don't want that because then that'll be a continuous eyesore if you just put trash there. We're not going, you know, get it, so.
So, so that's where we're at with the rural areas of, of, of Haywood County. And then of course, you know, the municipalities. Waynesville, we're, we're maybe in one or two piles, we're, we're through in Waynesville.
Okay.
You know, we've, we've about done all we can to, in the town of Canton, where as far as debris, we're just about done there. Now you're going to see piles of dirt and mud and fortunately we can't touch it right now because we don't have a, um, we don't have a line item price from the state of North Carolina yet on that. And.
You don't have a what?
We don't have a, a line item that pays for dirt.
Okay.
They're working on it, state's working on it, but as of this day, we've not received anything from the state as far as what that'd be. Clyde, um, you know, we're, we're really, there's some more things we've got to do in Clyde, but just to give you an example, and we need to probably put this out to the public in a public meeting, but like today, uh, we, we cleaned the one particular street in Clyde and our sub left to go carrot to the dump. When he came back, there was somebody else down there dumping some stuff. And when he stopped and talked to him, it was coming from another jurisdiction in Haywood County, but it was another jurisdiction and he'd been told, get a carrot there. So, you know, I talked to that jurisdiction and we talked to Clyde, you know, uh, this city manager there and, and she's well aware of it and she's taking steps to rectify that problem, you know, people coming from outside. So, you know, so we're having some of that to happen to. So it's, but that, you, that's nothing new. That's, that's, I mean, that's something we expect, so.
Well, if, if somebody decides to load up some flood debris and bring it themselves, can they bring it to your sites?
No, sir. The public can't come into the site and it, because we have to keep track of every cubic yard that goes into those sites by FEMA rules and regulations.
Oh, okay.
And it's, so if we just let John Q. Public come in, it's, we kind of lose that accountability. So no, they, they can't bring it in just because of that.
Okay. And then at these sites, so you, you take it and what, what are you doing with the organic debris? Are you burning it or how?
We're going to wind up burning it, yes, sir.
You are?
Yes, sir.
So what are you, stockpiling it for now until you start burning it?
Yes, sir. So, so what we want to do is organic, we call it vegetative, same thing.
Sure.
So when, we'll bring in a curtain burner, what we call the air curtain burner. And that's what we'll burn it with and, and that really cuts down on the amount of smoke and.
Right.
And doesn't make it as much of a nuisance as it would. We're not going to open burn, uh, so it's going to be an air curtain burner. And we just stockpile it to get enough to really.
Make it worth your while.
Make it worthwhile, that's right.
Okay, yeah, that's great.
And then the C and D is being carried to the, um.
Landfield.
Landfield, yep.
Well, by burning it, it keeps it out of the landfill, which is great.
Sure.
By burning it, it keeps it out of the landfill, which is really good.
And, and, you know, we want to keep as much out of landfills as we can because with the events up here in western North Carolina, I mean, you know, we're going to do a lot of damage. There's a lot of damage that can be done to landfills with just C and D all around.
Yeah, I guarantee you.
Okay? And then, and so that will finish up the right-of-way project. And then, and so that will finish up the right-of-way project. You know, there'll be some more stuff coming up that I'm sure the county manager, assistant county manager, we get into, we all about later on, but, but that, that's where we're at. So I'm hoping by the end of February, maybe, that, you know, we'll be through with right-of-ways, and having the bulk of it out of the two sites, the bulk of that material out of the two sites.
Okay, great. That's great.
Roger, I've had, I've had a couple of calls, well, more than a couple. Actually, people run into me at the grocery store.
Sure.
Somewhere out, and there's like, what's going to be the deadline on the trash pickup? Because they've expressed some of the same concerns that you expressed publicly. You know, they think maybe somebody's throwing household trash in these places, and they also, they really want to see these pickup sites really cleaned with a fine-tooth comb, because all of the fines, the small debris, you know, you, I understand, and I've, I've tried to convey that to these folks, that, yeah, they're going to make more than one pickup at this site, there's no use to spend all that time and money on picking up the little bitty stuff, because there's going to be more.
That's correct.
And so you're going to assure us that on your final pass, that you're going to clean up all these little bitty items that a grapple hook will not grasp, because there's, there's getting to be some very, you know, a lot of, a whole lot of little stuff left behind, and a lot of our residents, my constituents, are, you know, vocalizing that to me to make sure that SDR does what they say they're going to do, and clean this up really, really good on their final pass, so.
Yeah, and we're going to do what we say we're going to do.
Yeah.
So the way the process works, so let's say my subcontractor comes to me and says, okay, I'm through with Chris Boyd Road, okay? And then I'm going to go look at it, okay? And then I'm going to, I'm going to do what we call a QA on it. Say, okay, yep, I agree you're through with it, or no, there's, there's more here you got to do. Anyway, then I say, okay, I think it's good. Then I go back to the county, and I say, okay, county, we're saying this road's done, would you please send somebody there to look at it and see if it meets your expectations? And if they come back and say, no, it doesn't meet my expectation, we want you to do so and so and so and so, then certainly we're going to try to do that so and so and so and so. So there is a process to where you have to kind of release us, you as a county, okay? So it's not like I can just walk away, yep. So there's accountability up and down, if that, if that helps you better.
That, that's what I wanted to hear, so, thank you.
And then the other thing, you know, anybody's saying, when do I need to get debris out? Get it out now. You know, don't, don't worry about a deadline. If you've got more debris, just go ahead and try to get it out. That's, that's the best thing. Does that help you?
That's good.
Okay.
Well, I, I kind of, I kind of knew the answers to those things, because I'd asked you about it before, but I just want to put that out there again to communicate that, you know?
Yes, sir, I get it. I get it, I surely get it.
Yeah.
Been there, done that before. Any other questions?
Smile for the camera.
Do I?
Smile for the camera.
Oh, boy, yeah, there you go. Guy from east North Carolina up here, so. And that's, that's, that's where we're at in Haywood, with our municipalities. Okay. All right, thank you all, and good luck.
Thank you, Roger.
Okay, the next item is detention center expansion project report, and we have Vanoy Construction representative Lance Haney and our finance director, Christian Owen. Welcome.
Hey, good evening again, Lance Haney, Vanoy Construction, thank you. Thanks for your time tonight. Overall, the project is, is going very well. Haywood County staff, design team have been, have been great to work with on the project. I do have a few aerial photos here, just kind of walked through what we've been doing for the past eight or nine months out on site. We started the project back in April of 2024. The first few months are, you know, we're demoing the annex building, kind of getting the site established, some mass grading. So the photo you see on the screen is from June of 2024, just to kind of orient everybody. At the top of the, top of the page there, you can kind of see the existing detention center, southern concrete over here to your right-hand side, and some maintenance buildings down there at the bottom of the page. At the, at the point of this photo, you know, the site has been established, the majority of the contaminated soils have been removed and disposed of. We've started bringing in the imported fill. You can kind of tell there, the portion of the site that's at a higher elevation than the rest, that that's where we're starting to establish the building pad. Thank you. Jumping ahead to August of 2024, I apologize, this picture's at a slightly different angle to, just to reorient, existing detention center there to your right-hand side, you can see, actually, Waynesville Country Club there to the top of the page underneath the clouds. At this point, the, in August, the building pad had been established, you can see a retaining wall is ongoing, kind of starting at the existing detention center, working its way around the perimeter of the building there to the, to the far side. Deep foundations are complete underneath that retaining wall, and then we're in the process of, of working on shallow foundations, traditional footings, if you will. Looks like this picture is taken on a rainy day. Next one, September of 2024, you, back to kind of the angle of the first photo, that retaining wall is complete, foundations are complete, the stem walls that the, the exterior walls will eventually sit on are ongoing. Hard to see in the photo, but the underground electrical rough-in and underground plumbing rough-in is ongoing. In a clearer photo, you can see conduits and sewer stubs there on the slab. Jumping ahead to November of last year, underground rough-in is complete, the slab-on-grades are ongoing. In that photo, three of the five cell blocks, the slab-on-grade has been poured, and then prepping to pour cell block C and D, kind of closest to you there on the page. The last photo that I had is from December, all the slab-on-grades are poured and protected, exterior structural block walls are ongoing, MEP rough-in in those walls are ongoing as well. I, we didn't have, when I sent this in last week, didn't have the January update drone photo, so we are a little bit farther along than that picture shows right now. Some of those walls that you see are, are higher up, and we've made our way down kind of to the, the corner closest to the bottom of the page, and then started those walls back toward the detention center. This slide's probably slightly repetitive, kind of already touched on these items, but but big, big-ticket items that are completed to date, removal of contaminated soils, mass grading, deep foundation, retaining walls, shallow, traditional foundations, slab-on-grade, underground mechanical, electrical plumbing rough-in, and then structural C and D walls are in progress. Look ahead to the, to the next few months, we're pushing to complete the structural block walls. Once that's complete, we'll start to set structural steel and roof joists, get the, get the roofing installed, push to get the building dried in. At that point, we'll get the steel cells on site and install those via the openings in the recreation yards. And then, once those are installed, we'll start working on the inside overhead mechanical, electrical rough-in, and then the masonry contractor will kind of drop back to where they started and, and start on the brick veneer install. Material procurement's always something that we fight, that's going well on this project as well, so I did want to report that the steel cells procurement is, is going well. That's a photo from the, the factory in, in Georgia, so they're almost ready to go. Just need to install the plumbing and light fixtures in those. That's kind of what I had from update, happy to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Have you run into any unexpected problems with labor or subcontractor issues, getting enough help?
Um, no, sir, we haven't, not, not any unexpected ones. It's always a, it's always something that we monitor, and, and I hate to use the word "fight," but it's something that, you know, that we try to manage actively, so, so not any unexpected ones, ones that we kind of already, already knew about, and, and try to manage those things as we go along.
Are you getting full support from the architect that we hired?
Uh, we are, we are, we, absolutely, we are. They, they, they've done a great job getting back any answers that we've asked for, and coming to meetings and giving input. We, we are, anything that they've needed, they, anything we've needed, feel like they've, they've tried to accommodate.
So you feel like everything's going on schedule and as planned? I mean, everything looking good?
Yeah, I do, yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay. Well, I, I appreciate the update. I'd ask our county manager to get you here tonight to provide us an update, and I, I appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. If there, if there's something in future updates you'd rather see, just, just let me know.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Hey, Christian.
Good evening. I'm here to chime in on the financial piece of the detention center expansion progress. Through December, we have paid out $11,628,171, which is 37% of the entire project, and about 42% of the GMP from Vanoy. We have some costs outside of the GMP, so that's why the total project is a little bit
That was through when you'd paid?
Through December. I tried to line up with what Lance was presenting, so that we were in the same comparison. Any questions? All right, thank you all.
Says it all, Christian, thank you. Okay, next order of business is discussion or adjustment to agenda, but I do not have anything. Does anyone have anything on that? Okay, next will be our consent agenda. Anybody have any questions on the four items on the consent agenda?
No, just to comment.
Just to comment, I saw Judy here earlier. They, they do a wonderful job. I've had, I've had some constituents ask me, and I didn't bring this up before, but it's been a crazy, kind of a crazy timeframe. But, you know, people are worried about issues with the tax department on back taxes, or something they have been charged with, and they didn't think they should be charged with, and I had, I had one, one individual that I said, look, just, just go up there and, you know, they had got a notice, it actually blown through about three or four notices, that they had tried to work with him for some time, and he'd just, they'd got put in the trash can, or he just had neglected it. And so I think when he got a, he got a letter saying, I were going to go a little bit deeper in the woods, he called me, or got ahold of me, and he kind of panicked, and I said, look, if you've, you've blown through all them stop signs, I mean, what can you say? But he was embarrassed about it, and he'd, he'd actually got with Judy, and they told him what he needed to do, and, and I said, don't be afraid about it, I mean, you know, the, the tax department will help you, they'll answer your questions and try to help you work through this. And so he'd called me, he'd actually called me today and said that it, it was a, it was a problem that was his fault and another party's fault, that he'd sold a, sold a trailer to. So they got their heads together, and I think they've got a plan, and that's why we have on the consent agenda refunds and discoveries for cases like that. You know, where there's been a breakdown in communication, and things can be worked out, and, you know, some people do get, get a refund. So, anyway, that's, that's the consent agenda, it's on the consent agenda, and I just, just want to say that, you know, our, our folks are here to help you, and, and the guy was very appreciative, so.
Okay, that's good. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, you want to post. Okay, next order of business is a regular agenda, I only have one item, request approval of a budget amendment in the library, $4,434 to appropriate fund balance for the purchase of three computers for the Canton branch of the library. Funds were budgeted and computers ordered in fiscal year '24. You're back, Christian?
Yes, I'm back. Yes, this is for computers for the Canton library. They were budgeted in 2024 and ordered in 2024, but they did not here till 2025, so we wanted to appropriate fund balance for the funds that were budgeted last year to cover those purchases.
Okay. You have any questions? Okay, can we have a motion to approve item one of the regular agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Thank you, Christian. Okay, now, last order of business is to request approval of an appointment of Mark Javon to serve a, a three-year term on the Haywood County Recreation Advisory Board. Did you want to make a comment on that, Chris, or anything? I will, I will say that the Recreation Board, which is Brandon's on that, he's not here, and Bryant's not here tonight, and as I said earlier, it's because they're in Raleigh. I said that at the beginning there, so they're down in Raleigh on for county business there. So, anyway, Bryant said that Bryant had told me during, I'm sorry, during, uh, the meeting, a genocidal meeting, that the Recreation Board had made this recommendation, so. Does anybody, can I have a motion to approve item one of appointments?
Make that motion that we approve Mark Javon for a three-year term on the Recreation Board.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, you want to post. Okay, that concludes our business for tonight, and does anybody have anything else they want to bring before the board?
No, I just, I missed you telling folks where Brandon was at tonight. I wrote a little note here and asked the chairman to tell everybody where he was at, but I must have missed that, so.
That's all right.